Okay, uh, we'll call the city council workshop, January 30th, 4:00 PM to order roll call.
Nicole and Drew.
Stan and Horace.
Kirby, Moana.
Michelle.
Dan Reamer.
Jared Boden.
Jessica Bonilla.
Uh, wastewater upgrade discussion.
All right, well, I'll give you an email council. Um, as you know, we're working through the facility plan associated with the wastewater treatment facility. Uh, preparing the facility plan to submit that to, um, PFA and PCA for potential, um, funding for that improvement. And so as we're, we're going through this, you may recall, we did some population projections, council reviewed those. Um, so as we've been working through the process, uh, the facility plan is typically required that you look at three options, um, for the improvement. Which isn't, isn't difficult, but one of those options that typically comes up is regionalization. So as staff was reviewing, um, information, the question came up, well, is regionalization an option? Well, the short answer is yes, but ultimately, the, the whole point of this discussion this evening is to determine whether or not council, um, desires to consider that option or even investigate it, um, any further. At this point, we've noted that Buffalo could potentially be a regionalization option for the city. But that's as far as we've taken it, aside from a staff discussion, and we did, we wanted to make sure that before we move any further, um, investigating that, that, uh, we get council's input, cause if it's something that council doesn't want to pursue, then we don't want to, expend the effort to, to evaluate that. But if it's something that you guys are open to, um, we can discuss that in the, uh, facility plan. No decisions have to be made when the facility plan is submitted, it's just, here are the options that the city could consider, um, moving forward for addressing the treatment needs. So that's really the, um, premise of the discussion this evening, is whether or not council must even consider, um, regionalization potentially in Buffalo. We haven't had any conversations with, um, with Buffalo. It's, ultimately, it's your plan and your decision, and as staff, we wanted to have that discussion.
What would the cost be to send everything to Buffalo? I mean, all of that would be upfront cost.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's a number, and I don't want to get the cart too far ahead of the horse here, but with the, the various wastewater commissions that I've worked with, um, they're all a little bit different, right? I mean, some of them are a commission. In Buffalo's case, I, I can't, I can't imagine that they would want to be involved in a commission. They'd rather probably look like the city of Montrose and, and Waverly has customers to their facility, right? Just based on some, some rough numbers, and we haven't ran through them, cause again, we don't want to put much time in if, if council's not in favor of investigating it further, but just based on some rough numbers, at least initially, it appears like there could be cost savings, um, with regionalization in terms of the project. And then the other things that would have to be worked out are obviously rates, um, cost per thousand gallons. SAC credits, uh, are typically the two primary components that most entities, when they're accepting wastewater from another entity, are the two financing mechanisms. Of course, the city, um, Buffalo obviously has their own treatment plant, but we would need to look at their capacity, um, to determine. Number one, can they accept the flow initially without a, without an upgrade to their system? But again, more importantly, I think that if it's something that, that council's interested in pursuing, we can, um, dive into some of them calculations as part of the facility plan. And I, I would really see the next step, if, if you guys are interested in having those conversations, would be to have a, um, discussion with city administration and, and wastewater staff over in Buffalo, so.
So I have had discussions with the utilities director in Buffalo on this.
Okay.
It wasn't a, a no, we don't like the idea, it was more, it's gotta work for both of us. So, Dan, what are your thoughts on it?
Well, the meeting we had prior with Bolton Lake, uh, was that like a week and a half, two weeks ago, up here? Staff, um, Brian, the operator, myself, Jared, a few Bolton Lake people, Jess. You guys agreed for them to do that plant study, right? And she came back with a couple of options. One is to upgrade our plant to activated sludge. Activated sludge is a whole different ball of wax. I mean, that is, Ponson's ain't gonna work, that's pretty much what she said, you're gonna have to go to an activated sludge plant, which is kind of what Buffalo's got. So, I mean, you're talking big money. Regionalizing Buffalo, I think is the smartest way, but then again, you're always gonna be a customer. I favor the Buffalo thing, but he's pretty much just asking your permission to start talking to Buffalo, cause obviously it's gonna occur costs for Bolton Lake to start doing that. Staff's agreement was to regionalize, is what we thought with everybody that was up here. Because with, with, uh, upgrading the plant we have, you're looking at, we're gonna be hauling sludge, probably not every five years, we're talking monthly, maybe for a few months, activated sludge is a whole different ball of wax. I know no one likes that, to be a customer, you know, we're gonna be considered a customer. But I'm on the public work side of it, not the operator side of it. And we still have a wastewater system to maintain, um, we'll have a big lift station to maintain. Uh, most likely, we'll end up using some of those ponds as an overflow. Buffalo will only take so much a day, you know, rain events will have to hold some back, but our agreement, staff's agreement, was to go with Buffalo. Now, I don't know about Waverly, like, like he's asking, you know, these guys will talk to Waverly in Buffalo here and see what they have to say. Otherwise, you guys are gonna be building a whole new wastewater facility. I don't know, that's... Activated sludge is a whole new ball of wax, I mean, I don't even know how to run an activated sludge plant, and we will have to learn how to, but...
Now, you would have to...
Would, you'd probably go to a Class A plant too, right, Jared? I think that was discussed.
I think that's what Johnny said.
With considered, like, automatic Class A plant.
Yeah, so you would have to...
Somebody here would have to test really quickly.
So you'd be incurring costs there.
I think you'd have to hire, I don't know, two guys, full-time guys, now, I'm talking full-time guys at the plant. Not guys that can plow snow and do this and do that. It's a lot more of a biological process, and temperature plays a big factor. Activated sludge, return gases, a lot more pumps, return lines, chemical feed, chemical costs. No matter what, the city's gonna be spending money if you guys want to grow.
So why only look at Buffalo?
I don't know where else to go.
Well, we just identified Buffalo, it was the closest.
Is it?
Based on, based on, uh, their plant location and whether it comes through miles of forest main. That, that's simply, I mean, certainly, we could expand that, that look, but, uh...
Where is their plant?
It's on 25, going toward, uh, Buffalo. But I call it the last major hill there when you're coming into Buffalo, when you're going down that dip.
Okay, yeah.
You can take that gravel road to the left and it'll break you down around to the plant. So, I mean, I've been back there a few times, it's been a while, but, I mean, we were hauling some of our sludge there to begin with. They didn't like it too much.
Was this like a contract thing that we had, or was it just something?
This is a verbal agreement we were trying, that's why we bought that honey wagon that original time, but it was honestly like, we were hauling, our sludge was at like 35% solids and they wanted 3%, so that means that they wanted us to water it down. And it was still super expensive. Like, yeah, it was, and they didn't like all the ferret that was in it, blah, 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 yah, yah, yada, yada, but we didn't haul to them for a while, and we took care of it the way we took care of it, right? But, we're gonna be doing that more and more. Yeah, I mean, Buffalo, linear wise, is probably the closest big enough plant to be able to handle it.
I mean, I got a couple of questions, but I guess we can't really, the whole capacity thing, can Buffalo even handle it?
Right.
The two towns, even with the potential growth of bo, all three towns? And is, what's the, what's the cost gonna look like for everybody else? Long-term, short-term?
Well, it's gonna be kinda like Waverly where, you know, when Montrose raises their wastewater rates, Waverly has to manage that. So Buffalo raises rates, you're gonna be paying what Buffalo pays, most likely. And then you're, you know, and you'll have to go maybe a little above and beyond that, and like wastewater plant two fees, because you still have to supply money here for the lift stations, what we have in town, what we have out there. You're gonna be a customer. Now, will Buffalo, like you said, will Buffalo want to sit here commission? Who knows? But that's where you give the okay from Bolton Lake to move forward and start talking with them. I mean, they can't really move forward to start talking with them, cause it's gonna occur costs, right, which needs council approval.
Again, more so, um, associated with that, is we certainly don't want to be talking to another community about regionalization if council's like, no, we don't want to be a customer.
We didn't want to do that at all, right.
So before we, before we went any further in the process?
I, I think that we should explore it, and whatever that looks like, if that means it's just us, then we look at that too.
Yeah, I mean, the talk, a little talk was in there too, like, our contract with Waverly is null and void. I mean, if you read the contract we have, so... Is it somewhere, you know, you could be, tell Waverly, okay, well, we're gonna go to Buffalo, if you want to come with us, come with us, or do your own thing.
They accept that they don't have that option?
Well, they, they might go to regionalize with them, they'll make the lay, how they like. Who knows? I mean, that's something that they'd have to consider, you know, and look forward into, but I know back, and just the little bit I remember back when this plan was built in 2004, the first option was to connect with Buffalo originally. For some reason, they decided not to back then. I don't recall why, I was just a P on back then, so I don't recall. But I'm sure there's minutes, I mean, stuff you can look, go back and look at, but I, I think we should look at it.
Yeah, I think, I think every option's gotta be on the table at this point.
What kind of a contractor do you think that would be? Like a three-year, five-year, twenty-year?
In terms of, if, if regionalization moved forward with, between the city and Buffalo, um, I don't know, that'll be all spelled out in the agreement, but I would say, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want it to be less than three years, I mean, cause you gotta, and I think it's gonna be a longer look than that, right? I mean, typical planning period for a facility like this, twenty years. So for, for the, for the city of Montrose, be able to say yes or no to developers as they come in, I think we need a pretty lengthy period, ten to twenty years. Okay, well, we will, um, identify that as a potential option, the facility plan, we'll be able to dig into some of the cost questions that you guys had here this afternoon. When we present the facility plan, we'll have that summary, right? I know, I can't remember when Buffalo's last upgrade was or whatever, but we'll be able to show, you know, based on their existing flows, with our projections, you know. I'm confident they can take the volume right now, I just don't know how far into the future that means, is it ten years, is it fifteen, who knows?
You know, you'd share our population projections with them, I would assume, as well?
Yes.
So the hit back on the Waverly one, remembering that contract, I don't see, they're not null and void, that was a ten-year contract, and it was supposed to be revisited every nine years, if it wasn't, then automatically just renewed. So I think that's what we have with Waverly, is like a ten-year revolving, we don't talk about, so I'm gonna have to renew. So I'm assuming it'd be something along those lines, ten years or twenty years at a time. But understanding that Montrose would still need a giant lift station installed, forest mains running. So, I mean, it's gonna occur a cost either way.
Yeah, there's a lot of logistics involved in that.
And ultimately, you still have a collection system on all the streets that need to be maintained too. So, I think in terms of regionalization, I think that, you know, I know, but the initial upfront cost should likely be less than if you're building a, a new plant. And so as those negotiations, if that continues to move forward, as those negotiations happen with Buffalo, and if they can look at the rates for flow and SAC units and just see what the impact is on the overall cost and the rates to, to the residents of town here or something. But we will, uh, we'll take another regionalization as part of the facility plan. And that's all I had on this council's questions.
Well, just got the ball rolling on that, I guess.
Thanks, Jared. Uh, capital improvement plan.
Mayor and council, this was requested by a health member to discuss, um, this is something that staff does want to look at this year. Um, if council has any wish list items, anything they've been thinking of to add to the capital improvement, now would be the time to start thinking about those. We'll probably want to sit down and really start focusing on it after the audit in February. Um, Michael's kind of busy with, uh, his plate right now, um, so we were, we were thinking March, um, maybe sit down and have another workshop and talk about the CIP. The old one that we have is really outdated, hardly any of it is relevant anymore, if any. I know that staff is gonna also review that before we meet too, um, just to see what's on there and see if anything that is on there we need to keep, or if we can just start fresh and move forward. Do you have any questions or?
Along those lines, when is the update of the AUAR gonna be done?
I'd have to look at the specific date, this, this spring, early summer, I believe, is what we were scheduled for with that, but I think it'll be perfect, council.
Do you have copies of the current CFP?
Michael said it's not something that's easily printable, um, because it's on such a large spreadsheet, and it might be microscopic printing, I don't know. He said that he had trouble printing it, so...
It wasn't very easy to print last time I did it.
Yeah, I mean, I have one here that Sean went over with me before he left, and that's the last time I've seen it. And there's some major changes that need to be done. This is just what he told me was on there. Just looking at it today, it was, some of it's laughable, but yeah, I mean, there's some major tweaking that needs to be done.
Can we get a copy of it in our email?
Possibly, yeah.
Might be four attachments, but...
It's just an eleven by like fourteen sheet, like, we have...
I didn't try to print it, so I'm not sure, but he said that he had trouble printing it, so I'm not sure.
I just remember the last time I asked about it, I was told that it's easier if I come in and make copies here than printing it all out of specific items, but...
I mean, is there any discussion on it now, or do we want to just see a copy of it first?
I'm gonna go to click, see a copy.
Yeah, I'd like to see a copy of it. I'd have one of them.
Yeah, I don't know if anything is relevant at all on that anymore, so...
I mean, it's a starting point though.
Yeah, nobody's looked at it for a number of years now.
I don't know, I, I mean, maybe Wayne did, I have no idea, maybe Deb did, I have no idea, this is just what the two months between Sean and them hiring a new director at that time, what he told me was on there, if they had to hire a director and to go forward into, I mean, it's, it's more public works, part of the CIP plan than what else is on there, but just the little bit that's on there is like, like regional park tree planting, seventy-five thousand, I'm pretty sure that's out the door, right? So there's gonna be stuff that needs to be revisited big time, and stuff that got completed a long time ago, so... So what she's asking is, you guys are good with having a meeting about this, even after you get it printed off, so we can sit down and go over it?
Yeah, for sure.
You think in March, Jess?
March.
Yeah, there's five Mondays in March, right?
First is a Wednesday, so...
I'm gonna say cloud the whole second week of March, Jess, by the way. I mean, I don't necessarily have to be here for that, but...
I think the next one is May, that has five Mondays and that lands on Memorial Day.
Let's go the 27th of March. That's that last Monday, right? Uh, Girl Scout building discussion?
You don't want me to?
Don't matter.
So with the planning of the next town celebration, um, we're kind of getting, trying to get our logistics and everything together, and we were looking for to see if there's any Girl Scouts around. Um, I reached out to Joanne Anderson, and at the time, she said there was nobody in the service unit, and there is a troop around, but, um, they're going to be leaving here, I believe, at the end of the school year, I'm not sure, what, whatever you came up with too. Um, so we're just trying to figure out that, the building that's over there, um, who can use it during Montrose, well, town celebration, and what we can do with it, and in discussion with Joanne, um, she sent out this building agreement that they have. Um, she sent it to me and to Kirby. So I thought it was important that you guys see what's going on with that, um, and what your thoughts are. Um, that building is just kinda a storage unit for them, so just kind of get, trying to get a feel of, and it, Kirby had a couple of discussions too, so with Joanne and, do you know the member, did the lady?
She was the only one that I talked to, but the only other person I talked to, her daughter's in Girl Scouts, that's, and then, yeah, I don't know, I, she said there's, they're not packs or dens, cause that's the scouts.
They're troops.
What's their subgroups though, what do they call those?
Like, Brownies, Cadets, yeah.
I don't know what the three ones were, but she said there's three of them with a couple in each, and so, but they're, they're working on... Yeah, there's another copy too, so, she said that this spring, once the eight feet of snow is gone, she's going to go through the stuff that they don't need and throw it away, and then the stuff that they're not necessarily going to use, they're going to try to give to other scout groups, Girl Scout groups, that can use it. And she thinks that that'll clean out a large majority of the stuff that's in there, uh, but that'll take her until spring, but I mean, based on this contract that they wrote up and agreed to, um, I mean, I don't know, I, it doesn't say anything about, well, any kind of terminating of the contract, and it even says that if we tear down the building, we need to give them space to put their stuff.
So I, I guess, I don't know, you're asking, you're asking to use it for Montrose Day celebration and not Girl Scouts, that's what you're asking?
Well, no, um, if Girl Scouts are here, absolutely, Girl Scouts are gonna use it. But if there's nobody there, um, what do we do? I mean, in all reality, this contract, I hate to say it, doesn't even exist anymore, because there is no Montrose Days and there really is no service unit. So, I mean, we're absolutely willing to, you know, let them use the building if they're going to be do we, the question would be then, do we want to let them just use it as a storage building? If they're not gonna participate in the town celebration? Or do we allow other, are we gonna allow other organizations to use city buildings as storage?
What, and, I, I, off of what you're saying, I, I think, just my trip pictures, what do you do if an organization has an agreement with the city and they're not using it other than for just storing things?
Good question.
I think that's where we're kinda at on this, is, you know, they did something in 2019, and then of course, it's just numbers are fluctuating for, for everybody.
According to Nelson, nineteen ninety-nine, they, they paid the money to have it built.
No, the, the building was...
Or they, they agreed to build it.
The Lions.
The Lions built it.
No, they didn't, Lori Welheil and Frank built it and donated it.
I know the city has spent some money and there's electrical work in there, I know that.
So who owns the building?
It's the city.
The city owned, it's on city property.
So have we actually...
You have a, you have a contract agreeing, Charlie Nelson agreeing that, pretty much, to me, I get out indefinitely, it's used for Girl Scouts.
Well, that's what it says.
That's what I get too.
So have we actually contacted any of who is active, Girl Scouts?
Yes.
About it?
Joanne's still the treasurer of the Girl Scout.
And she's the one that's saying, by spring, Girl Scouts will be done, and they're just gonna clear out what's in there?
They're gonna clear out all the stuff that they don't, that they don't need, they're gonna get rid of it. And then the other stuff that other units can use, they will donate it to them.
And Michelle wants to know if it can be used for storage for Montrose stuff?
No.
Or just used in general for Montrose Days?
Well, I think first and foremost, we need to, we need more clarification on this, whether it be from our lawyer or...
I mean, this predates everybody.
Predates everybody. I mean, is it still technically an agreement?
I would say technically, it's, still holds up.
That's what I would say.
See, I would, what I would like to see is you have that treasurer, have the lawyer sign something up and have that treasurer write off on it, that have her sign off saying, it's not a city billing, city gets it, so whatever they want to do.
Well, it is a city.
It is a city building.
But, I mean, the city guarantees they can use it indefinitely.
Right.
If you, if you want to be tactical.
If they revoke their rights to use the building.
Right, but again, if you want to be tactical for Montrose Days.
It says, use the concession billing indefinitely to store items related to its functions, indefinitely.
Related to the function.
Of the Girl Scouts.
It's function, it says it functions, the Girl Scouts functions.
Right, thank you, Charlie Nelson. Just so you guys are aware, the Boy Scouts have the same agreement.
Yeah.
So, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't want the city to get in trouble if, you know, like, you take all the Girl Scouts stuff out, and they start a chapter backed up, and they're like, hey, we got your contract, check it out, just check this out.
Whatever's in there now has to go.
That's kind of what she did, she's like, oh, we have a contract.
That's why we would need some sort of revocation or some sort of reword of honor.
And they're more than willing to, you know, let, whatever, share whatever. So, I don't know, I just think we need more clarification and a more up-to-date kind of thing.
And she had said too, that, you know, if there's other stuff that they still need to store here, you know, and in one, if, if they can't do something for Montrose Days, then somebody else could use it, and then we just need to find somewhere to store their stuff for
For that weekend?
The weekend, and then move the stuff back in there. That's what I got out of the conversation, but it's...
So then the city's gotta find more storage for their stuff.
We could, we, trust me, that's one thing that's in that CIP plan, and that I'm gonna add, is we need some storage buildings. I'm talking, not for pots and pans and crock pots, I'm talking equipment. Salt sheds. I'll get into that once this meeting shuts down.
Are there coaches in there?
I don't know, I haven't been in there in a long time.
I mean, they're probably twenty years old.
It's not that vague.
No.
I know that.
Well, I think definitely getting Joanne, if she's the only one left, I guess, in here to maybe do some type of clarification.
I mean, she's not the only one left, there's other people involved. They, they, they still meet at the Montrose Elementary.
They do? They're paying for that?
I don't know if they're paying for it, but that's what she told me, that's what they're still meeting, so.
We got a lot more clarification that needs to be done here.
Yeah.
I think this agreement in general needs to be, we need to run that by our lawyers.
Yeah, I don't know what kind of clarification they're gonna be able to offer.
No, they're gonna say that it's signed and dated, I mean, it's, it is what it is. You read it, you tell them you get out of it.
Pretty plain language, but we can certainly run it by them.
So the current troop is, let me find her messages, here we go.
To me, the city's hand is tied until you agree, have the Girl Scouts agree to something else.
And say, yep.
Yeah, so there's a Brownie troop, or Junior troop, and a Cadet troop. And this lady here is, gotta be the Cadets, because she's working with Joanne, Leah, so...
So I say, if, if we can get them to sign off on it and say, hey, we can basically make this null and void, then okay, let's move on from there, but...
And we'll still store your stuff, but with the agreement that you have to get it all, if other groups wanna use it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you're gonna spend, you're gonna be spending some money and some lawyer fees and writing up documents here.
Something in the past has been costing us a lot of money.
It's amazing.
This was only, well, ninety-nine, twenty-three years ago.
Or just have a verbal agreement, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I just, I, groups need to work together.
Some of it may, in the spring, may work itself out, but...
Well, I don't think there's a clarification on this, though, I mean, the city lawyer's gonna look at it and do exactly what we're doing.
They may, they may move their stuff out in the spring, but then come this winter, be like, yep, no, we're moving everything back in there, whatever's in there, not too bad.
I think the big thing is moreover, the celebration days, and being able to...
Well, that's fine, during Montrose Days, right, but then it says in here that they get to use it to store their items indefinitely, so, hey.
But I think that's where a lot of the, the conversation's coming from, is if they're not gonna use it during Montrose Days or celebration days, however you call it.
Can another organization use it, so...
Well, I guess, that'd be a question to the Girl Scouts, the way it looks.
Between them, that group and the Girl Scouts.
Who, did the Girl Scouts bring this up?
The contract?
Yeah.
I reached out to them.
Oh.
Because like I said, what, talking, you know, planning the town celebration, we're looking at that building, going, oh, I wonder if Girl Scouts is gonna be around, if there's a troop. So I reached out to Joanne, who originally said that there was nothing and no service unit. So I said, okay, what about your building? And then she sent the contract, so.
The last line says the city's using for storage, if the Girl Scouts are over, not guaranteed such a space.
Right.
So it's kind of a blah.
Yeah.
Well, it says, if it's torn down or we sell it, they're not guaranteed that, but we're not tearing it down, we're not selling it. So two just makes no sense.
Well, two, two makes sense if we decide, let's say the building catches on fire, kids all there playing with matches, yeah. But number one, as long as the building's standing, they get to use it indefinitely. That's what it says, and it's signed, and it's whereas, that means it was, council voted on. Right? I mean, that's what it means. So I, I, I guess I don't know what you're asking the staff to do here, have the city lawyer look at it? Is that what you're asking, or?
Well, I mean, I don't know, is...
I mean, I, I would think that those two groups need to work it out together. I don't think we should be getting involved in this in any other way right now.
This exists, and unless the Girl Scouts are willing to revoke it, or...
Sign off.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything we can do as a city, I mean, pretty plain language here.
Yeah, I think it needs to be amended to be more up-to-date.
If the Girl Scouts agree to it, I don't think we can just amend it.
Oh, do you?
But again, we could amend it, because there is no Montrose Days.
Well, even if it's just a quick name change on the celebration day, that would be the only thing.
Right.
And that's not gonna affect...
And if they're not using it, it should say that another organization could potentially use it.
It says that up there, but in the number one, it doesn't say anything about Montrose Days or any sort of celebration. It just says, we'll continue to use concession building indefinitely to store items related to its functions.
Is there a written agreement on both sides, I guess would be my follow-up question? Because if this is just the city granting that permission, we can revoke permission.
If you can, that's something you guys would have to do at a council meeting and vote on.
Not that I wanna do that, but I'm just saying that...
I'll send it to the attorneys and ask what our options are with it.
I don't even know what's in there, I haven't been in there in years, I have not a clue.
It's all the tents and camping and... I did just reach out to the girl who's got, I think, a Cadet troop, to ask if she could get her troops together so that we could chat with them and see what their plans are for town, Montrose Days, whatever.
So the Girl Scouts don't plan on doing anything for the town celebration?
As far as I'm aware, they don't have enough girls that could run that for a weekend. I mean, they could, parents could step up, who knows?
Volunteers, they'd use.
Yeah, yeah, it's extra possible, but...
I think, I think at this time, it should be a communication between celebrate Montrose and the Girl Scouts. I don't think we need to be involved in it at this point.
I can ask our attorneys just what our options are with this paper, I don't, you don't know that you have anything?
If you wanna go legal route, I guess that's the only way, can the council make a motion and file a new one?
Or does the Girl Scouts have to remove this, like, I don't, I mean, I don't see their signature on here, so...
I just, I don't see why we couldn't update a majority of the stuff in here and make it so that the city can use it for other purposes, but they get the right to use it during the celebration weekend.
It kinda goes for the same thing, like when we used to do National Night Out, we would use the Boy Scout, you know? It's kinda the same, even though it's the city's building, we have to ask organizations, hey, are we okay to use our building?
That'll probably be what needs to happen, I guess.
So, yeah. That was the big one.
Yeah, but she's asking Kirby, she's asking that not to have the Girl Scouts use it during Montrose Day celebration.
No, no, what I'm asking is if there is no troops, and they're not going to do it, can another organization be able to?
So what do they, they'll be like, yeah, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it, and then it gets like two days before, and they're like, we're not gonna do it. And then you guys are like...
Well, they have to be committed, I mean, obviously, they have to be committed, that's why they need to be updated, you know? Because if we're doing a town celebration, we wanna be able to use everything that the town has to utilize in that facility, you know, in that general direction, so...
I don't know why the Girl Scouts will just say, hey, you can use it, where do we want it?
They probably will, I mean, I don't know.
They're pretty confident they're gonna clean out quite a bit of stuff in there, so.
Well, I don't know how they're, I mean, there's enough room for two people to stand in there, turn around, and that's about it, from what I remember being in there.
You'd be surprised what you can do in that building. But, I mean, my, my basic point was just getting you guys aware of what's going on with city buildings.
Yeah, so don't do that as a council over again, right? Don't agree with a group for one building. Leave the city in power of it all.
Yeah, so just remember, the Boy Scouts have the same contract, because Charlie Nelson...
Donated that garage, I know, I've heard about it.
And he was the head of Boy Scouts, so...
That garage got donated, since he moved over there from his dad's property back then.
Oh, really?
Correct.
I remember it as the ice gateway, warming house.
Yes, it was. Well, yeah.
Kinda aging this, but...
That's what I was told many times, multiple times.
Anything else on that? City council meetings in two weeks, so...
That it is.
All right, workshop adjourned.